Thank you Supervisor Mueller and I now would like to invite our Chief Equity Officer, Shereen Malak of Sali, who worked on this resolution, to share her valuable perspective as well as some resources with the public and introduce some other folks to share their perspectives as well.
Good afternoon President Canepa, Honorable Supervisors, Executive Calagi, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Niblin, Clerks Purual and Golaston. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Shereen Malak of Sali, Taeidi, she/her pronouns. I want to thank you for the words that you've shared and for considering this resolution at this time to reaffirm the county's commitment and support for our vulnerable communities that have been historically and too often currently marginalized. The political climate outside of San Mateo County can has and will continue to shift and change, but locally we can stay grounded in core local values of fairness, inclusion, and commitment to celebrating our diversity and building the conditions needed for all residents to reach their full potential. The bridging across our differences to collaborate towards a brighter future is a hallmark of our county's success. With so many changes happening at the global level from globalization, economic changes, changes to demographics, climate, environmental issues, loneliness, misinformation, among others, we're seeing a growth in the language that divides our communities blaming one another for the anxieties and defining our humanity by varying labels and identities. The rhetoric of othering has increased fears dramatically in the ways that have been described already. We see our students staying home from school, missing educational opportunities. The County Office of Education has shared that they have seen an increase in school absences already. Our clients missing appointments, opportunities for further referrals, fears about signing up for social and health services, and increased stress and fear for our people's safety and future. This resolution confirms the county's continued vision that together we're stronger, more innovative, and able to weather challenges. Over the years, the County Board of Supervisors has demonstrated a strong commitment to advancing equity and belonging so all residents can live, work, and thrive free from discrimination or harm. In the fall of 2021, the Board adopted a resolution to advance racial equity, recognizing that over 60% of our communities are people of color. And last spring, the Board adopted an ordinance to solidify a commitment to advance just and fair inclusion through our government structures and systems. Last January, the county was honored as a certified welcoming county, the first county in the country to be awarded this honor, reflecting the county's investments and commitments and actions to support residents of all socioeconomic, racial, ethnic, and national backgrounds to feel welcomed, valued, and protected. The Board has demonstrated commitments to the rights and dignity of LGBTQIA+ communities, women, children, people with disabilities, immigrants, all genders and sexualities and beyond. In our Equity Office specifically, we have been supporting departments to identify and implement fair and equitable practices and policies, promoting capacity building opportunities for staff, our cities, and our communities, supporting cultural awareness, advancing inclusive procurement policies to support and prioritize our small local businesses, promoting community engagement practices for an inclusive democracy, supporting data-driven decision-making so that we can help our colleagues understand the impacts of decisions on our most vulnerable communities in relation to our overall goals, facilitating the Shared Prosperity Economic Mobility Action Plan, including starting a local pipeline into county entry-level quality career entry-level positions. Our goal overall is to promote justice and fairness so that our demographics and identities do not predict our opportunities or outcomes in life in San Mateo County. I'm going to share some remarks from my colleague Emma Gonzalez, our Chief and Director of Community Affairs and Programming. Unfortunately, she's out sick today or else she would be here. She's provided some talking points from the Office of Community Affairs Immigrant Services, but I will share that after having my colleague Dr. J Africa, Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, speak to the impacts of division and fear in the mental health of our communities.
Good morning again. First, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for reaffirming the county's support and protections for our vulnerable communities. We know from experience that policies that instill fear and anxiety are likely to prevent patients and clients from seeking care or callers from reporting abuse. In Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, we are hearing from staff and partner agencies the reluctance of clients and their families to seek services, fearing that any information about them can jeopardize their safety. Our LGBTQ+ communities, especially trans and gender expansive communities, who have already been experiencing a wave of attacks in the last couple of years, are especially fearful about the erasure of their existence under this federal administration. In 2024, there were 533 anti-LGBTQ+ bills that were proposed in the U.S., and while not all of them became law, it has caused significant amount of worry and fear for their physical well-being and mental safety. A day after the inauguration, a mother reached out asking what to say to her 16-year-old transgender daughter, and I quote, "who is completely freaked out and paralyzed with fear." A week after, a private practice therapist reached out asking for any statements or resources made by my division regarding the safeguarding and support for transgender community in San Mateo County so he could assure his gender expansive client who is trying to find hope and a reason to live. Clients have inquired about removing any mention of their transgender identity from their medical records. Even while we reassured clients and community members that federal and state privacy and confidentiality laws protecting them haven't changed, there is tremendous fear. As an employee who transitioned in health a decade ago, I am grateful for the support of the county, especially Health Chief Luis Rogers, who spearheaded the creation of a policy to support transitioning employees like me. And she began the move towards gender neutral bathrooms in county health facilities 10 years ago. Efforts like these have made it possible for me to stand here today and give back to the community. Imagine how many more lives can be transformed with the county's support. I ask for your unwavering support for the Pride Center, Co-Side Pride, the Pride Initiative, and the LGBTQ Commission so they may continue to be critical lifelines for LGBTQ+ residents. Let me end by reaffirming that our transgender and gender expansive communities are vital members and contributors to the richness of this county. We all deserve the freedom to be who we are. Transgender rights are human rights.
Thank you Jay. Now I'm going to share my colleague's talking points, Emma Gonzalez, on the Office of Community Affairs Immigrant Services. As part of the Office of Community Affairs ongoing commitment to ensuring a welcoming and supportive environment for San Mateo County's new coming residents, the Office has continued to advance key initiatives to address the increased fear and anxieties brought towards by recent rhetoric about mass deportation and other dispelling information. These efforts are vital in reducing the impacts of rising concerns related to immigrant enforcement, misinformation, and the general sense of uncertainty felt by people who have migrated. The Immigrant Services team strives to promote an inclusive environment, offering essential information, legal supports, and resources to our diverse communities regardless of citizenship status. In line with our finalized Immigrant Services strategic plan, our approach will include communication outreach and engagement, and continued learning and support immigrant inclusion. The revamp of our outreach strategies are well underway, and updates have been made to the Office of Community Affairs website with improved access to resources and legal protections. That website is smcomaffairs.org. And you can find quick links to immigrant services supports such as legal assistance and ways to access legal assistance, pathways to citizenship, county-funded rapid response line that Supervisor Corso mentioned earlier to report ICE activities, and information on Know Your Rights details and more. There's an opportunity to subscribe to stay informed of any new updates as you go forward. Their top-line messaging includes Prepare, Plan, and Respond. Preparing means having the consultation with trusted legal service providers to be able to explore possible immigration options and assist families in preparing for possible immigration-related emergencies. Promoting general information on immigration and citizenship classes. Planning. Planning to make plans for families that include emergency childcare, making sure they know their rapid response hotline. In fact, the team has distributed more than 4,500 red cards that include the Know Your Rights information. Response. They have some specific approaches that they'd like to say. They'd like to share that the advice of remaining calm, do not run away if you are met with immigration enforcement, remain silent and use the red card to assert their constitutional rights and immediately call the rapid response hotline. They also have been working in partnership with individual school districts as well as County Office of Education, Human Services Agency, Caron, Puente, multiple libraries throughout the county as well. A key component of the Prepare, Plan, Respond effort is the outreach that the Office of Community Affairs does that is consistent and timely messaging, pivoting to adapt messaging in the ever-changing environment. They have a strong social media content, hyper-targeted messaging to our most vulnerable communities, and they are launching a digital and social media campaign as well. The Office of Community Affairs Immigrant Services team continues to work closely with community partners, legal services providers, and residents to refine and expand these initiatives as we strive to create a more inclusive and supportive environment for all. Thank you.
Vice President Corso.
Thank you. I appreciate both of you sharing all of that information, and I do encourage our community to review that website and share information where relevant. And I also wanted to speak to the very powerful moving comments that Dr. J Africa made. Thank you for not shying away from who you are and for standing up for your community. And I think what's kind of on top for me is one of my favorite quotes, which is a quote by Lila Watson, and it is, "If you have come here to help me, you are wasting your time. But if you have come because your liberation is bound up with mine, then let us work together." And I think you're an amazing example of someone who steps up and works together with all vulnerable communities, not just for their mental health, but for their existence and their human rights. So I want to thank you for all of your work, and also want to recognize that in our community, we oftentimes make assumptions about who people are, what their identities are, and creating the safety for people to be able to share who they are genuinely is really important. It's important in our county. It's important in our state. And we really have to live up to those words and to make that a reality, even when we're under pressure, even when there is an intentional effort to instill fear in us and in our communities. So with that, I'll hand it over to Supervisor Mueller if you would like to add anything else, or back to President Canepa. Thank you.
Great. Are there any comments on this item? Seeing none, why don't we go to public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a few speakers from chambers. I will start with Martin Fox, followed by Pamela De Giovanni.
Good morning. I'm living under an assumed name. For the first 28 years of my life, my last name was used against me repeatedly, and I decided my children didn't need to live with it. I am the son, I am the great-grandson and the grandson of immigrants, one who served with General Persing in France in World War I, the other one served over at Okinawa, General MacArthur. I did five years of military service with that name, and I changed it because I didn't want my children to have to live with it. So I understand immigration, and I understand how to integrate in a community when I had the opportunity. And I'm asking for your help to take the Private Defender Program's person and outsource that out of the Private Defender Program. Immigrants are not criminals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next is Pamela De Giovanni, followed by Rita Mansera.
First, I'd like to thank the Supervisors for bringing this forward, and Shereen and Dr. J, who I've been blessed enough to know and even have known as friends for a long time. And you know, I always knew, because even when he was in the other county, and I kept saying, "When are you coming back to San Mateo County? When are you coming back?" And you are here, and you are here. And that's a testament to who both of you are, and we're all here together for a reason. To the Supervisors that sponsor this, to all of you on this board, we all, the theme today to the President is the vulnerability, the vulnerability of our communities. When someone calls me and I have to give them the 988 number, because they're afraid that their gay son who goes to a high school, a local high school, she doesn't know whether she's going to commit suicide, she's up all night, she doesn't know where to go, what to do, she's beside herself as a single mother. That's just one example. Other example is I go, and most people know where I live in Westlake Apartments, I see a moving van, I know the DACA student, and she's leaving. And I said, "Why are you leaving? Do not panic." But anyway, I just want to say, obviously, support. And I can't say enough about all of you together and what you're doing in this county, and it's done with heart and care, and continue on, and God bless all of you, and you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Rita Mansera? I think she might have left. So no additional comments from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Click on Zoom. Please click Raise Hand for Item Number Nine. We currently have four speakers. After the first two speakers, I'll go ahead and make a final call to raise your hand. At that point, I will announce the last name that we will take for this item, Item Nine. Grace X, followed by Karen Grove. Grace, please unmute and begin.
Yes, hi. I believe the majority of people in this county agree with what I'm about to say, but don't want to be called a racist by people like David Campania, who essentially called Ray Mueller once for wanting to carve out the sanctuary policy to cooperate with ICE to arrest and deport illegals. Maybe that's why he gave his Emmy Award performance a few minutes ago. Let's be clear, anyone that enters the country illegally is an illegal alien. They are not immigrants. In the last week, international fugitives, murderers, rapists, pedophiles, gang members, and fentanyl dealers have been captured by ICE and other counties. By refusing to cooperate with ICE to capture the worst of the worst, you're not only endangering the lives of citizens that you vowed to protect, but also police officers and other illegals. You're also in violation of federal law for which I hope there will be ramifications for your bad behavior, which I believe is politically motivated since none of the people here illegally have been vetted and could be a danger to us. Not all, but some. Even one is too many. Don't think that this horrific crimes have not and cannot happen here. Your rhetoric and response have been shameful by aiding and abating dangerous criminals. And to answer David Campania's comments from April 2023, "I clean my own house, cut my own lawn, and don't like kale." Thank you very much.
Thank you Grace. Karen Grove, followed by Rita Mansera. Karen, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon. I logged on to say thank you very much for bringing this forward. This is a moment where it can be scary to assert our values of equity and inclusion and dignity for all human beings. And the more that people do assert those values and show up in that way, the easier it is for others, and it is the most important thing we can do right now. I'm a child of immigrants, and as you may know, I live in Menlo Park. I also chair the Grove Foundation, which my family started after my dad, an immigrant, helped lead until into becoming a big success. And yeah, immigrants are really important to this country. Immigrants, we couldn't function without immigrants in our society. We are safer if our immigrants and all people are safe. So thank you very much for bringing this forward. I really appreciate it.
Thank you Karen. As mentioned, this is now going to be a final call to raise your hand for public comment on Item Number Nine, Reaffirming the County's Support and Protections for Vulnerable Communities. So please do raise your hand at this time. Final call has been made, and our last four speakers will be Rita Mansera, Catherine Dumont, Pat Willard, and Hui Tran. Rita, please unmute and begin.
Hi everyone. My name is Rita Mansera. I'm the Executive Director of Puente de la Costa Sur, and I want to express my support of the proclamation proposed today by Supervisors Corso and Mueller to protect and support vulnerable communities. I'll focus today on the immigration issues while we stand along other groups also a threat. The policies and actions of the current administration are spreading fear in our communities. At our agency, we're getting phone calls about asking us how safe it is to go to their health appointments, if ICE will show up at children's schools, who to call if someone in their family is detained. You hear this morning that Alas received hate mail, Co-Side Hope did as well. And in response to a flyer to a mobile consulate in Half on Bay, someone commented that this will be a great opportunity for ICE to show up. If their goal is to spread fear, they are succeeding. Our immigrant communities need to hear that you have their backs, that you're going to do everything you can to support them. And I know there's more to do, but I do applaud the initiative to bring nonprofits together recently to plan for federal priorities for our county and the efforts that the Office of Community Affairs is doing. And thank you, and I hope that you approve this resolution.
Thank you Rita. Catherine Dumont, please unmute and begin.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you Board of Supervisors, especially Ray Mueller and Supervisor Corso for bringing this resolution forward, and I fully support it. The importance of counties' individual actions can't be underestimated. What we really need is state-level support as well, but you can lead the way in showing the state how this should be done. And I was shocked to find out yesterday that there's no county in the state that has funds to support the families of detainees whose breadwinners have been wrenched away with rent, food, mental health, all kinds of support. So I urge you to also find funding sources to boost these programs. Thank you.
Thank you Catherine. Pat Willard, please unmute and begin.
It's unfortunate to hear a member of our community labeling immigrants criminals. I'm not going to call your names because it won't help anyone to do something like that, but I would like to remind you of American history. Shortly after World War II, a group of immigrants from the Philippines came over to the United States to work in the fields on their coast. The result of that was for white locals to initiate a riot, killing one and harming others. Let's not do that with the people who are migrating here today. Thank you.
Thank you Pat. And our final speaker, Hui Tran, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon Supervisors, and thank you to Supervisor Mueller and Kinda before this resolution. And I also appreciate Pat Willard for being very polite, but I will go ahead and call the first speaker, you know, calling him out for what is racist and xenophobic comments. You know, my name is Hui Tran, I'm Executive Director here at Siren. A lot of folks are reacting to the dangerous and inhumane executive orders that were issued last week. But the reality is that mass deportations began a few weeks ago with the Border Patrol operations in Kern County. That operation created immediate ripple effects throughout the state as rapid responders investigated calls of immigration agents in multiple locations. Our staff were trying to verify some of these claims in the Bay Area and the Central Valley all in the same day. We will certainly deal with the fallout where even now migrant workers aren't showing up to work. The fear is real and the need is urgent. The ask of the Board is to preserve and increase funding for immigration defense, uphold the sanctuary ordinance, launch a comprehensive Know Your Rights campaign, and work with community-based organizations on how to protect and support our immigrant community.
Thank you. Mr. President, that concludes public comment.
Great. I just, oh yes. Yes, thank you President Canepa. I actually do need to respond to the comments, one of the comments, because my position in the past was misrepresented. My position back in 2023 was that I was supportive of state law, the state sanctuary law, and specifically in the county sanctuary ordinance. I was looking for three exceptions for classes of serious and violent felons. But I want the record to be clear, I actually do support the state's sanctuary law. And I want to point out to folks who are on the other side of that, that back in 1984, going back that many years, there was a presidential debate in this country between Walter Mondale and Ronald Reagan. And in that debate, one of the candidates said, "I believe in the idea of amnesty for those who have put down roots, lived here, even though sometime back they have may entered illegally." And to that caller, you may be surprised to know that that candidate was actually Ronald Reagan, who had been the governor of the state of California and understood the California economy depends upon undocumented families, that they are valued and appreciated members of our community. So I need to speak to that. I actually am incredibly disappointed with the comments of that caller today, and I yield, President Canepa. Great. Thank you. I just really want to thank Supervisor Mueller and Vice President Corso for really their leadership on this issue. And so with that, Supervisor Corso, would you like to make the motion?
I have a comment. Sorry. I just, I wanted to comment and say thank you for bringing this resolution about vulnerable communities. And to Dr. J, thank you for sharing. Shereen, thank you for sharing. Often when we think about vulnerable communities, and when I look at what here, I think the indigenous people are left out. We are on the land of indigenous people. This is not even our land. So I think we should include them as well. And I am proud to be from a county where we are protecting the vulnerable communities. And I think xenophobia has no place here in San Mateo County. So I fully support this ordinance or resolution. Thank you again for bringing it forward.
Thank you. And actually, I would love to amend the resolution to specifically include indigenous communities as well. And as someone who personally does identify as indigenous, I'm embarrassed for myself that we didn't make sure to put that in there. But thank you for pointing that out.
I accept the amendment. Is there a second? So I'll second. You're making the motion, Supervisor Corso?
I move to approve the resolution with an amendment including indigenous communities as well.
Just to be clear then, we have in the, I'm looking
Just to be clear, then, we have in the, I'm looking at a paragraph that reads, "Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo reaffirms its unwavering support and protections for immigrants, women, people of color, LGBTQIA+ individuals, individuals with disabilities." Would you like me to, to note there, the indigenous community, or is some words to that effect?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. We need a second?
A second by Supervisor Mueller, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor, I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear? Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gachet?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.